Good morning, NAFEC family and welcome to our June Virtual Town Hall. We've been in COVID stage one posture HBCon Charlie for over 90 days now. And I wanted to take this opportunity to update you on things we've accomplished around the base during this time, as well as give you insight into upcoming events. I have subject matter experts and program managers from many elements of our installation joining me today. And we will discuss housing to include your tenant bill of rights, as well as an update and upcoming events from Lincoln Military Housing. We'll review some milestones we've achieved with environmental compliance recently. We'll take a look at the big operational upcoming milestones for the base, an overview of the DEFI program and what opportunities that brings for our families, and a recap of summer safety key elements. We'll close with a discussion of stress and resiliency, and I'll address a handful of topics received in my CO's suggestion box. And finally, we'll have a brief discussion on race, fair treatment, and inclusion. You may notice during this video cuts and splices as we rotate guest speakers. During this time, we're conducting cleaning of our microphone and chairs to ensure we're observing our personal health protection protocols. Guest speakers and I will remain in excess of six foot separation, which is why we've chosen not to wear masks in an effort to make this video easier to understand for those watching online. Thank you for joining us. Okay, our first topic we're going to discuss today is kind of the lay of the land with COVID. What's going on in the local community, what we're doing here on the base, and then what I need from each of you. I'd like to introduce Lieutenant Blonian, our Public Health Emergency Officer, our NAFEC's very own flight surgeon and doctor. Sir?
Thank you, sir. First, we'd like to start out with just kind of a lay of the land of what's going on in Imperial County and then other local metro areas. Imperial County's cases continue to climb. For frame of reference, over the last two weeks, for each week, we've had roughly 700 new cases per 100,000 people occur in this area. That compares to about 30 cases per 100,000 for San Diego. So the risk here is significantly larger. Additionally, we have increasing numbers in Yuma. Mexicali is also exploding with cases, or relatively stable but at high incidence of cases. So we're surrounded by areas with significantly increased risk. Question is what we do about it here for base population in the NAFEC community. Best place, or the best practice you can do is probably to stay on base when it's possible. Our base community here has done well with COVID. We've had a select few cases affect our NAFEC community, but overall, the base has been quite clean. So when it's reasonable, if you can rely on services on base to meet your needs, that's highly recommended. With Yuma's numbers, they're relatively similar to those in the Imperial Valley area. So it's not recommended to go out into town for anything that's not essential. And for peace of mind, since we've been shut down for a while here in terms of social life, if you need to maintain a psychosocial well-being, travel to San Diego is encouraged. They've done quite well with managing and containing the virus, although their caseload is increasing, it's slow and it's manageable. So as needed for family, friends, and anyone in the community, I would endorse San Diego as a reasonable alternative for social escape and taking a break from the current environment. Sir?
And the best things to do when you're off base is continue to practice those individual health protection measures. Wearing masks when within six feet of other people, avoid high concentration areas such as large shopping areas or places where a lot of the public goes, and wash your hands, antibacterial, clean those surfaces. Just do those things to take care of yourself. We've done a good job keeping COVID off the base. Other installations in the region have had one particular challenge. Folks have come to work sick, and that's the one thing I really ask you to do. If you don't feel well, please don't come to work. Contact tracing from some positive cases has indicated that there are people out there that have come to work for four, five, or six days symptomatic, spreading that problem inside that installation. So I really need your help and your self-discipline to answer those four questions every morning. Get your temperature checked every morning before you come into work. Please help us manage that risk by keeping the problem off the installation so we can keep the bubble clean. Doc, anything else?
Sounds good, sir.
Okay. In closing, and Doc mentioned it regarding the numbers in Yuma, I've recently changed the liberty radius for those active duty forces and personnel to just stay out of Arizona for the time being until they get their hands around it. A couple of weeks ago, they were doing pretty well. There's been a spike in numbers that has caused me to, with the Doc's consultation, to kind of take that off their liberty area, just as a protection measure for all of us. Okay, well, that's COVID. Your chain of command and your tenant leadership have a lot more information about this. We meet every week and we push out a significant amount of data. So if you have more questions, reach out, ask your chain of command, and we'll get you either best practices, or health measures, or numbers about what's going on in the environment and things to do. If you've got some concerns that aren't being answered, please don't hesitate to reach out. With me now is Ms. Ruth Arrow, the Deputy Director of our Public Works Department. Ruth?
Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
Today, I'm going to talk about what our Environmental Department has been doing during COVID. Our water treatment plants and our wastewater treatment plant treat our potable water, drinking water, and our sewage on base. They have put together their reports for their annual certifications. They have been submitted to the California departments that control our certifications and keep us up and running. They've also been very busy with our ATRF, the firefighting foam that we use on base. It's been being replaced for a more environmentally friendly type of materials. They've also been very busy with all of our little creatures that we share the base and the bombing ranges with. There's been quite a few reports that have been coming out of that office to keep us up and running on our ranges specifically. I don't have any other topics that...
So a lot that our Public Works Department and our base operations support contractors have been doing throughout the last couple of months to keep those environmental elements of our mission within guidelines, within parameters, and able to keep the mission going. So I appreciate what you're doing. The water treatment for the families on base here is much appreciated. Everyone enjoys the tasty water. We have the best water in the valley, and that's documented on paper. So we're happy to have that. Thanks for the update.
Thank you, sir.
With me now is Ms. Maria Brownell from our NAFEC Housing Department. And we're going to talk about a few things of interest for all of our residents of housing. Maria, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Perkins.
Good to see you.
I'd like to see you too. So as Mr. Perkins says, my name is Maria Brownell. I am the Housing Inspector Manager for Navy Housing at NAFEC. My role is to assist with any unresolved housing concerns, quality assurance checks for completed maintenance work orders done by Lincoln Military Housing, and health and safety checks on homes prior to residents moving in or moving out. So as previously mentioned, our housing update is with the, in regards to the Tenant Bill of Rights that we recently received, as well as the Plain Language Brief. So first, I just want to demonstrate what that Tenant Bill of Rights looks like. It's just a little two-page Tenant Bill of Rights here that goes over what your benefits are as residents here with Lincoln Military Housing. So we just want to go over what's currently approved, which is just 14 of the Tenant Bill of Rights. What is still pending for approval at this time is access to maintenance history, escalation of disputes, and withholding rent until disputes are resolved. So specifically for our DOD civilian residents here at NAFL Centro, Tenant Bill of Rights number 12 does not apply. To go into detail as to what that means, any military legal assistance can only be provided to active-duty military families. Any DOD civilian residents seeking legal assistance will go through their Employee Assistance Benefits website. Your Tenant Bill of Rights was emailed most recently to either your civilian or military email. If you would prefer a hard copy of your Tenant Bill of Rights, one can be provided to you at Building 401 here in NAFL Centro in the Housing Service Center, which is where I'm located. Moving on, your Plain Language Brief is this lovely 38-slide presentation. So what that goes...
We're not going to go through the whole brief today.
Absolutely not, we're not. So we just wanted to let you know that that is just for us to make sure that you, the resident here in Lincoln Military Housing, acknowledge what you signed in your lease agreement. It just has helpful information as well in regards to what we at the Housing Service Center provide to you and what Lincoln Military Housing also provides to you as a resident. Just some important things to remember that are included in your Plain Language Brief. The Housing Service Center is located, as previously mentioned, in Building 401, and the Lincoln Military Housing District Office is located in 3041A on Second Street here in NAFL Centro. Other important things to remember, your move-out procedures do require you, the resident, to provide Lincoln Military Housing a minimum of 30-day notice to vacate. We at the Housing Service Center are there to assist you with the final move-out inspection. Housing Service Center can also provide PCSing assistance with your next duty station. The point of contact for this would be Arsenio Cortez, who is our referral services personnel. Another important thing to remember, there's only a maximum of two pets per household. That means either cats or dogs, so one cat, one dog, two cats or two dogs. The end point here is only two pet maximum. However, if you do have a service animal, that would be required to be submitted with a reasonable accommodation request with Lincoln Military Housing. Moving forward, a really big, important topic that seems to be a concern nowadays is mold mildew and water intrusion concerns. You, the resident, are responsible for reporting this to Lincoln Military Housing via their Maintenance 24/7 Call Center line. That number is 1-888-578-4141. Again, that's 1-888-578-4141. Even a small water leak left unreported can lead to major property damage and health risks due to mold growth. So please report it as soon as you see it. Moving forward, any and all maintenance requests can be made via the aforementioned 24/7 Call Center line. We at the Housing Service Center are unable to create any work order requests for you. However, Lincoln Military Housing can assist you with any concerns such as pest control requests, maintenance emergencies, repairs, line replacements, and more to maintain your home in good condition for the duration of your stay at NAFL Centro. If you prefer creating a maintenance request online, Lincoln Military Housing does have a resident app.
It's really easy. I can use it.
Yes. Personally, myself, I don't like to talk to people too much on the phone. So it's a really convenient way to submit those requests. So if you do need further assistance navigating and registering for access, you may reach out to your district office here at NAFL Centro at 760-352-2110. That is again, 760-352-2110. If you are unsure who to contact for any housing concerns, we recommend following the three-step process, which is of course first, Lincoln Military Housing. If you still do not have any resolve, or resolution rather, with any of your concerns, you can contact the Lincoln Military Housing Management Office in San Diego. And finally, if the issue still persists with no resolution whatsoever, you would then come to us at Housing Service Center. You would be specifically speaking to me in regards to those concerns. Just some final points to address. It is mandatory to return your sign-in completed acknowledgement form in regards to your Plain Language Brief. Both the service member and the spouse are required to sign it and date it, and then please do return it to us at Building 401 at the Housing Service Center so we can put it for your records and provide you a copy promptly. Our business hours at Navy Housing are from Monday through Friday, 07:30 to 16:30. We may be contacted at 760-339-2921 or 2920. That is again, 760-339-2921 or 2920. And that's all, Mr. Perkins.
So Maria, with our current COVID posture, is there somebody always in the office if residents have an issue, or is the phone number the best way?
We always recommend to follow COVID procedures by social distancing. However, our office hours are still open with any representative during those aforementioned business hours times.
Super. Well, we're going to have our Lincoln partner come up here following you, and we'll talk about a few things from their perspective. But as a resident here, the key takeaway for me is really, it is a partnership. There's expectations that we have as the Navy of tenants to do, and there's expectations that we have of our partners in Lincoln Military Housing that they do. And this is trying to lay all that down and make sure that there's no questions about each person and each element of that roles and responsibilities. So we're here to help you if you have any challenges, and don't suffer in silence. If you're having an issue that Lincoln's been unable to resolve to your satisfaction, please get your command representative in our NAFEC Housing Office involved so that we can help you get whatever it is that you need. Thanks very much for your time, Maria, and always great to see you. And joining me now is Mr. Matt Ruane from Lincoln Military Housing. Matt?
Thank you, sir.
Great to see you.
Appreciate you having me here.
Certainly.
Good morning, El Centro. Just a couple of things for you, and hopefully you all received this in the last couple of weeks. But we have restarted our routine tickets. So if you have a routine issue that you need addressed in your home, please use the LMH app or call the call center, submit your routine ticket, and we'll have that addressed. We understand that in some cases, you may not want us in your home, given the current environment, and that's fine. If you need things like air filters, light bulbs, if you need those things changed out, we can deliver them to your front door and leave them there for you to pick up. So that is an option for you. We also still have pest control services ongoing in housing. That occurs every Wednesday, so, and I know this is kind of a season where pests are kind of rampant. So if you need pest control services, please don't hesitate to do that, and we'll address that for you. Another thing I'd like to talk about, because I know this is a concern, our parks in housing, working very closely with the captain and the region commander at Boulevard on getting those things open. I know we're not there yet, but the captain and I both agree that we've got to stay in lockstep with this. So that's what, that's what we're going to stay with, and hopefully we can get it, the COVID-19, to a certain point where we can open those up for you. We want to get them open for you as much as...
Yeah, and if I could jump in real quick. So on the, on those playgrounds and the splash parks and all that, they're tied to the different staging of reopening. And as Doc Blonian and I were discussing earlier in the, in the Town Hall about the environment off the base, it's just not conducive. We haven't met those thresholds to allow us to safely reopen those things. So we're going to work in unison with Lincoln Military Housing and get those things open. And trust me, it's at the top of my list to get that support out to the families. We're just not quite there yet.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. One of the other things I want to touch on is community service events. So it's been a challenge to try and keep those ongoing, but our Community Services Director and staff are being very creative. We got a couple of things on tap for you. So on July 9th, there's going to be a virtual bingo, and that's from 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. And then Thursday, August 6th, we're planning a Jeopardy night, and that's going to be run virtually through Zoom. And then sometime in September, and hopefully we're climbing out of the current environment, we're doing, we're planning to do some sort of community expo drive-through event, which is contact lists. People drive up, we can put things in the cars, in the trunks of the cars and stuff like that. So right now, that's tentatively scheduled for September 17th. All events are via the registered website system, so please make sure that you're active on those systems. And these three events are lottery-style. So you put your name in, and then they'll do a lottery style and select a few families from that. So other than that, that's all I got, sir.
So if folks are watching this right now and they're residents of the NAFEC LMH Housing and are not getting that email distribution, who should they reach out to?
They should reach out to the Service Center, the Call Center, or the District Office and get their emails and phone numbers and stuff like that.
Yeah, so that District Office right here on base, a great team in there. And Lincoln does a great job of pushing out information via email, but only if they have the right email address is it going to get to you. So all those things that Matt mentioned for upcoming events are being pushed out through the web and through email. And if you're not getting those, help us help you get that data. As a resident here, I really appreciate what Lincoln's done as far as keeping us safe while you've continued, continued to operate in this environment. What can personnel, what can residents expect when folks come to the door for trouble calls? What's kind of the protocol for interacting with the workforce?
So when a technician will come to the door, they will ask the four basic COVID questions?
Yes, and the same questions we ask at work, they're going to do the same thing.
And I would encourage residents to, you ask the technicians the same questions they're asking you. So you have that confidence that they're healthy and they're, and they're able to do the job.
And the environment we're in, please, nobody take offense. If anybody feels uncomfortable, either side can stop this process and say, you know what? Today's not the right day for you to come in the house or for, or the worker to, you know, I'm not comfortable with the environment right now. We'll step back, we'll figure it out, and then we'll make sure that you, as the resident, are getting the service you need while we're protecting you and the workforce together.
And they'll maintain that six-feet social distancing, they'll have the masks on. So your safety is important to us, so.
Well, the best part about the PPV is the word partner. And I think Lincoln and NAFEC here have done a great job being partners, and I appreciate your team and your local team, Cindy, has done a great job out here working with me. And so I appreciate the leadership you guys have been doing, and looking forward to continue the relationship.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks very much. Okay, and with me now is Wine Two Duran from Strike. And he's going to talk about the DEFI program and what opportunities that offers for our families and our children. Wine Two, great to meet you.
Great to meet you too, sir. Thank you for having me.
Certainly.
Good morning, NAFL Centro, as well as the DEFI families out there participating in our current program. Wine Two Duran here, most commonly known by the families as Jose. Just kind of wanted to give you guys a current update of our 2019, 2020 DEFI year, as well as what we hope to kind of do for our next year, for 2021, how we're going to be proceeding with our COVID situation, as well as what we have planned with the current stages of the mentoring, as well as the camp. So the first point I want to go over is our current year closure. So I know it's been a little bit delayed. Last year, we did it in May. This year, we're trying to do a virtual graduation at the end of June. We're going to go ahead and try to do like either a Facebook Live or a YouTube Live kind of session to be able to kind of reach as much people, as well as kind of have all the kids involved in there as, as much as possible. As well as, we will be providing virtual certificates for you to be able to print out at home, or if you would like, you can send me an email or contact us by Facebook to be able to get a signature, and then that way we can get it physically signed if you would like that as well. So that is our current state with our 2019 year. We're going to hopefully close it up this year very soon at the end of June, and more to come. We'll go ahead and send that out via our Facebook page. The second thing is going to be our 2021-year planning. So our current timeline has actually shifted. So previously, from last year, we actually would have began in August, which would have been with our week-long camp, either out here in El Centro or over in the mountains over by San Diego, El Cajon, all those areas. But this year, we're going to be shifting it. So we're going to be beginning in September with our mentoring program, which is going to be our month-to-month mentorship, about three to four hours every Saturday, once a month. And then at the very end of the year itself, we're going to be finishing off with the cap, with the week-long camp. Usually, we're going to try to end it at around May, maybe June. That's, that's going to take a little bit more planning, like I said, especially with current restrictions around base, as well as the state itself. So more to come on that as we kind of continue the rest of the year, as well as we finish up our mentorship. Another point that I kind of want to bring up is our precaution and mitigation. So we are definitely observing all of the restrictions and especially the precautions to maintain as much social distancing within our participation of our kids, as well as our staff members. So we will definitely be observing a lot of that. So if we are not able to do a mentorship program, we, like I said, we will more than likely do a virtual meeting with all the kids. We will go over our general lesson plans, as well as any other activities, or like I said, another way to be able to interact. If you have any other ideas, or maybe something that we can do, say some video game night or a trivia question night for the kids, then please feel free to contact us, and we'll go ahead, we'll set that up with a little bit of time to make sure that it's as interactive and, like I said, as fun as possible for the kids participating. The last couple of things, we are actually going to be recruiting. So volunteers, I am currently looking for both volunteers to replace myself as the local program coordinator, as well as some of the key staff around the DEFI program. I'm actually due to PCS next year. So if you have anybody or know of anybody that's interested in definitely making a difference around base, especially for the kids with this current situation, please contact me. I will go ahead and send out an email to all the enlisted personnel, as well as anybody at NAFL Centro who wants to be a part of this great program. I would love to interview them and get as much information of them to be able to make sure that this program is going into the right hands. Please feel free to reach out at any time, and I will be available for any questions. Final thing, if you do have any questions, if you need more information, as well for our next year's participation, for volunteers, or just some general inquiries, if you're going to be moving to the area or leaving the area, you can contact us either by Facebook, Gmail, or Google Voice. I am always available to answer any time of the day, and as well, if you happen to be around the base, just see me. You can always go ahead and stop by, either at the Hanger Bay, or if you see me at the next. Other than that, sir, that's, that's as much as information if you have any questions for the program.
Hey, Wine Two, first, thanks for everything you're doing, helping out the families with the, with the running of this program. It's been a tremendous impact to the folks who live here. As the Navy tries to figure out how we safely restart PCS movement, and that'll be health-based metrics in the local community will be a big part of that, we're going to start to see more and more families start to show up. So for those who aren't familiar with the DEFI program, can you talk a little bit about who's eligible, what the purpose and intent, and just a little bit of overview of how it works?
Yes, sir. So the program itself is ran by Big Navy. We get all our funding, so it's no cost to any of the parents at all, or any of the DOD civilians who have children that want to participate in the program. It's, like I said, it's not, nothing out of pocket unless you want to contribute something to, to the program itself. But it's available to children from ages nine to 14 for general participants, and 13 to 17 for junior staff mentors, kind of giving them, the main point of that is to kind of, we kind of separate it out to be able to have participants, as well as kind of give the junior staff mentors a little bit of the leadership tools. So not only do we work as a mentorship program, we also work as a leadership course, to be able to kind of develop a lot of those cases and a lot of that situation, a lot of conflict resolution, bullying, things like that, for, for future things that could occur, say either at, at home or in any other location, especially because of PCSing.
Super. Well, thanks very much for everything you're doing, and we'll post more information about the DEFI program right here down below in the comments section on our, on our posting. Thanks very much, Wine Two.
Thank you very much, sir.
Joining me now is Ensign Wiggum, our Air Traffic Control Facilities Officer for here at NAFL Centro. He's going to talk a little bit about upcoming operations, what we've been doing on the airfield, and what's coming down the pike. Aaron, good to see you again.
Morning, sir.
Morning.
Likewise. Morning, NAFEC family. You may have noticed the training aircraft flying around the past couple of weeks. It was a major success for them. I spoke to their OICs specifically, and so they thank us very much for that. You can expect to see an increase in operations the next few months, all the way through about November, beginning early August. We should have about 500 additional personnel along with their aircraft onboard. So we do ask that if you see anything that doesn't look right, please report that up to your chain of command so we can have a chance to engage with those that may not be familiar with the base. To put some minds at ease, they have all been briefed on the current COVID postures, as well as what our mitigation procedures are here on base. For the 2021 Air Show, I know a lot of you may be thinking, what, what's the status of that? We are working diligently to figure out a plan to engage with the local community, as well as the Blue Angels. Nothing's solid yet, but there are plans in place for that.
Yeah, so we are continuing all the work about the Festival of Flight and, you know, what that's going to look like for 2021. It's too early to say what that shape's going to be, but the team is looking at a variety of different options to get back into doing that. And related, the operations team here and everyone on the base has been doing a phenomenal job continuing the command's mission. We're here to provide air operations support to those fleet operational squadrons and training squadrons. The Sinatra detachment that was just out here, phenomenal work. They can't get their mission, their annual metrics for creating pilots without coming out here. So thanks to all of your team that was supporting that. Talked to their Commodore when he was here, and they love coming out here, and they really, really say we're one of the best people to work with. So I appreciate your team taking that forward. Okay, so if you have any questions about what's going on in the operations side, just write it up through your chain of command. We'll feed that back to you through our tenant command process, but I appreciate you just kind of giving a quick overview of where things are. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is feedback on some CO's suggestion box input that we've received, just to provide answers back on policy or questions that came from the field. First up is a request for UV lights in the commissary and exchange and other workspaces to sanitize people and products from COVID. It's an interesting comment. I know there's a lot going on in the, in the medical sphere outside. There is no medical indication that says this is the, the solution and the, the right answer for COVID. So we have not implemented that as the Navy as the best course of practice, because there's still debate on whether, whether that is a viable, viable best way ahead. There's a lot of debate about contact surface, you know, surface transfer from touching one thing and the spread of the disease on that surface. So for us, the best thing to do is to do those individual force protection, health protection measures that we've discussed earlier, frequent washing of your hands, wearing your mask, and that's the best way to work that. So thank you for that input, and that's about the UV lights. There was a question in the box about two weeks ago about COVID cases on base and rumors of COVID being rampant. And yes, there have been some positive... And yes, there have been some positive cases on base. Contact tracing informs, as the doc and I were discussing earlier, that the most likely cause of that was out in town somewhere, whether it was from a family member or from a location where they lived or visited. Transmission is not rampant inside the fence line. We've all been doing a very good job of doing our workforce protection, our individual health protection measures, checking folks at the door with the medical screening questions and temperature, and that's the way we've been keeping it off the base, and that's what we need to continue to do. Self-discipline is the key buzzword here, and it takes a lot of individual willpower and reinforcing it and enforcing it with others that may be slipping up on their self-discipline a little bit. Help us help ourselves keep the COVID off the base. Default towards safe. And again, I can't stress enough, if you don't feel well, or if you feel at all off, please stay home, seek medical advice based on the condition you have, and let's avoid the risk by potentially bringing that onboard the base for a couple of days in an unknown status. Thank you. There was a question about the fitness facilities and specifically the skate park and when that might reopen. I mentioned earlier that we're tied to a set of gating criteria of environmental medical thresholds that have to be met regarding rate of transmission, result of positive tests out in town, those types of things. We're not there yet, and we're not trending toward getting there real soon. I am pushing on every avenue I have to try to get services on the base open. Right now, they're bundled together, and we have to meet all those environmental conditions off-base before I can open up the entire bundle. I'm not authorized to individually open up discrete functions. I've asked for that, and my boss and I, and her boss, are discussing ways to potentially get to yes while managing the threat and mitigating the problem on base. If you notice, if you've been on base recently, examples that are like our fleet liaison office in our operations, that first contact with the detachments when they arrive, or in our NGS and housing, or in our pass and ID, you're starting to see additional protection measures like face shields and Plexiglas between customers and the workforce here. All that is designed to protect ourselves, and before we open the gyms or other facilities, we're going to implement similar measures across every one of those. We've got those resources on hand, we've got all the cleaning material that we need to do that, we're just waiting on the medical environmental conditions to support me, making a strong recommendation that we're ready to go. So that's where we are with those things. I'll keep your chain of command and your tenant leadership informed every step of the way as to where we are on the readiness to reopen, and we'll be sure to be publishing things well in advance of doing that. That's where we are with the base reconstitution planning. There was a question about COVID regarding personal protective equipment and face masks, and why the Navy is not issuing those like they do for gloves or firefighting equipment or other types of hazardous work environment. The bottom line is, this thing's affecting the nation at the same time, across all aspects of life. It affects us when we're off work, it affects us when we're at home, it affects us when we're off base, and it affects us when we're at work. The Navy is in the process of developing a uniform item that is authorized for wear and that will be made widely available for use on base. It's just not out in sufficient numbers yet. There's very limited quantities of that. In the meantime, what we're asking ourselves to do, and I've got it, my family's got it, is some individual masks, low cost, to help mitigate the spread of transmission from person to person. So that's kind of the way forward. We're all in this together, and it's really not a significant ask that we're asking from you. So it's for the protection of us all. So thanks for your support and understanding with that one. And the last one regards authorized patrons at the galley during this COVID HBCon Charlie that we remain in. So right now, the only personnel that are on base is those mission essential personnel and category A personnel that their job is directly linked to critical fleet operations. So Ensign Wiggum and I were discussing earlier in the broadcast, the operations that we supported, the critical, critical elements of the training squadrons that were out here, and the fleet squadrons that are coming out here in the next couple of months to get their really important training events done. That's the mission of the base. Protecting the worst workforce to enable that mission is kind of my role. Therefore, I've authorized all those mission essential personnel and Cat A to be authorized to use the galley. Now, the galley remains taken out only for now. If you're uncertain as to whether you're a category A, a category B, which is not yet back at work, or C or D, contact your leadership. They're the ones who develop the list of which fits into which category. So a quick recap of the categories. Category A is those folks we need aboard to help us get ready to move to the next phase. Category B is those people that are needed to move to the next phase that cannot tell work. Category C is those folks that are teleworking and we're ready to kind of slow that down and bring folks back to normal posture. And category D is those personnel that are higher risk for COVID transmission. So we're going to work through this thing sequentially, and we'll get to each category as appropriate, based on the medical conditions, the environment, and the mission of the base. So right now, the mission essential personnel in category A authorized to eat at the galley, and that includes DOD civilians and some select contractors that I've authorized. And if you're unsure where you are on those lists, contact your supervisors. And we received a few questions via our Facebook feed that I wanted to address very briefly. First regarded the Navy policy regarding participation in protests, and I will cover that in my closing comments. The second one was regarding the playgrounds and when those would be reopening, and Lincoln Military Housing rep Mr. Ruane and myself discussed where we are with that, and so I think that one's been answered. And the final one regarded sexual assault prevention and response training in the workforce. And real quick, we've just concluded our annual and post-change-of-command equal opportunity and DOCS survey. And that was one of the areas that actually was highlighted in the survey. So when I do the back brief to the command writ large, I'll be addressing a shortfall we have in the SAPR understanding how the program works. Ms. Wanda Valencia and I will also work additional training for the workforce. So I'm going to address that more formally and in greater detail than I will in this town hall. But I will, I will tell you that we'll make those resources and those training aids available throughout the entire organization, both civilian and military workforce, so that everybody understands where we are. But I will reaffirm that my policy regarding sexual assault is it has no place in our Navy and has no place on our installation. So we're going to make sure that victims are supported, we're going to make sure that everyone understands the reporting process, if you unfortunately experience this, and how to take care of you, and then we'll make sure that everyone understands the do's and don'ts and the regulations of the process. So we're going to work that one offline, but thank you for bringing that question up for my attention. There was an additional question about summer safety, and I'd like to direct everyone to our videos tab on our Facebook page to get a look at the video 101 Days of Summer. It's also hosted on our NAFL Centro YouTube page, and you get to see our NAFE safety officer, Mr. Rodney Sims, as well as our world famous command master chief, talk you through all the different areas you need to kind of be on the lookout for throughout the summer heat and in Imperial Valley, the summer safety issues. So that's where we're going to get you those resources, refer you to that area of Facebook and YouTube. And finally, resiliency. I mentioned earlier the stress, summer stress and COVID stress that that's imposing on all of us, civilian, military, families. We're each feeling it differently. I would ask that, once again, please don't suffer in silence, and please do not hesitate to reach out. Our Fleet and Family Support Center has a wonderful counselor program. They're available anytime to talk about any topic, whether it's social, whether it's individual, whether it's what's going on around the country, whether it's what's going on in your individual life, as well as our command chaplain, Chaplain Jenkins. He's available at any time to talk on anything, whether it's spiritual resiliency or anything you need to talk about. There's some resources there. And your chain of command always has an open door. If there's something that's bothering you that you want to get off your chest, we're always happy to talk, and make sure you get the right to help for anything that's ailing you. Thanks very much for all those questions that's coming in, and that's what we got. Thanks. Hey, one last shout out to Kingsmeadic, representing NAFL Centro. Took second place in the worldwide online esports tournament earlier this month, so congratulations for your esports dominance. Our final topic for today is fair treatment and inclusion. Recently, many different groups across the nation have voiced their concerns about fair treatment. Inside the fence line aboard NAFL Centro, where the Navy sets policy and I enforce it, I've already discussed with each of you my expectation regarding how we treat each other like family. I've alluded to it in discussions at my initial CO's calls, and my command policy statements put it in writing clearly. We, as an organization, are stronger when we treat each other right and foster an environment where everyone is part of the family. You should have no fear of being treated differently, regardless of your skin color, sexual preference, gender, or religious belief. If you feel you're being treated differently, there are many ways we can address this. Come see me, the XO or CMC, anytime. If you prefer to remain anonymous, use my CO suggestion box located in the galley, the NGIS lobby, the gym in Take Five when they reopen. Whether you are active duty or civilian, you have a command-managed equal opportunity point of contact. For our military, it's NC-1 Wolford and ACC Summers. For the installation, tenant commands each have their own. And for civilians, it is your unit HR rep and region EO officer. Or visit our Fleet and Family Support Center counselors or command chaplain for advice. They know how to protect your privacy, yet inform me of critical climate things that I need to know. You have every right to expect to be treated fairly and courteously, with respect, by everyone else aboard the installation, on duty and off duty, on the flight line, in housing, in the galley, or in any of our facilities, or when interacting with our security force. They all know my expectations, and if those are not being met, there are mechanisms to realign that so it is executed per my vision and per policy statements, for the benefit of us all. However, that is only part of the challenge the country is experiencing today. Outside the fence line, the situation may be candidly different for many of you. I want to remind you that should you elect to voice your opinion off-base, you must do that as a citizen and must not represent yourself in a manner that indicates the Navy has taken a position on any issue. If you feel like your voice is not being heard, or if you're seeking help navigating this crisis, I ask for your feedback on what we can do to aid you. Please reach out to our Fleet and Family Counselor, to our PAO, or to any of the triad so we may understand how best to help you voice your concerns. I wish you all have a wonderful weekend, and thank you for joining us at the town hall.